Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Scotiastate Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June the 6th, 2023. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country, with the highest and most venerable honor of the Constitution. Thank you.
Please be aware, this meeting has been livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and the meeting may also be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. The first order of business is public comment, so this is for anyone wishing to raise an issue that is not on the agenda. It's also an opportunity to ask any of the board or staff a question, or if you have a comment about anything in the township. So again, if you have an item that you want to raise that is not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. Doug?
Good evening, everyone. Doug White, Township President. I just have three comments here. I was wondering if we still do the savings bond rewards for the staff that has had perfect attendance? Have we been doing that? We used to do it, give up $100 savings bonds for staff that had perfect attendance? I would be in support of that if they would do that, restart that. Also, maybe we could do a board's recognition event we had a few years ago. And also, I just had a question. This might be a dumb question, and it's sort of water over the dam already, but as far as setbacks requirements, bulk area requirements, is there any stipulation for large retaining walls that were located on properties?
There's a requirement in the Township zoning ordinance for retaining walls to be located, I believe it's 10 feet from a public right-of-way.
Okay.
It has to be greater than 4 feet tall.
Okay, so if it's greater than 4 feet tall, does the home or the structure on the lot have to be a certain distance away?
Are you talking about a retaining wall?
Yes, very big one.
So retaining wall is, if it's, I don't understand your question.
Okay, well, right behind us, on the road Z, the curfew, the retaining wall is quite high, and the houses are 10 feet away from that wall, 15 feet away?
So you're saying is there a setback from the wall to the house? There is not?
There is not, no.
Okay, because the wall is considered...
The only setback requirement or zoning ordinance that I'm aware of, which correct me if I'm wrong, is the requirement for walls that are located, that have to be located a certain distance from the public right-of-way of a road.
If they're great.
If they're great. No. It's if they're greater than 4 feet, they need a building permit. Any wall can't be ten feet.
So in that case, the wall is on the lot?
Correct.
And so the structure can be right up against that wall, and it won't violate any...
As far as I know, there's no code in the ordinance that requires a setback from a wall to a residential property.
Okay, I was just wondering. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else who wants to make a public comment? Yes, sir. You just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Steve Conjar. So at the last meeting, I guess there was conversation about a dog bite in Chatwood, and that was me that got bit. This kid, Josh Noel, is a menace to our neighborhood. We've got a lot of young families in this neighborhood that are afraid to walk the streets because of his two pit bulls. They've got little kids. That dog attacked me, which I am pretty sure was on purpose, because when I was walking towards their house, he disappeared into the side of the house, which is a basement area. And as I walked by, his mother was sitting there. I said hello to her, she had this look on her face of fear. As I get by, this dog comes out and gets me. First thing I did was say to both of them that was the dog that had the day on his shots. But imagine if that was a 12-year-old kid, not me, that's going to a baseball game to play a game, and gets bit like that. And I just feel like the SPCA didn't do enough about it as far as making a dog a dangerous dog. It's just, and you know, on top of all this, I guess the SPCA told me that the mother told them that he wasn't even there that day, that he was not around. All right, so I'm gonna read something to you. So within an hour of this happening, he posted on Nextdoor. Kid, for some reason, doesn't like me. I never had words with him, nothing. He said, "I warned you, this little faggot walked too close to our house, and now his big-ass muscles are crying for an ambulance." You effing pussy. All right? Then supposedly, they were taking this down, but...
I'm sorry, did he, you say he texted you that, or he posted on...
He posted on Nextdoor, the Nextdoor app.
Do you have a date when this occurred?
May...
Let's see here. And did you report this to the police?
Yep. You know, I've got, you know, I've walked this neighborhood almost every day, and I walk by this house. This house is a blight to the neighborhood. It's not in good condition. They've got trees that they cut down weeks ago that are still laying in the yard, one on the edge of the hill. I'm not saying it's gonna roll down the hill, but you get some young person walking over there with their child or whatever, and that log comes rolling down the hill, it's gonna hit him. All right? It's, they got solar panels on the roof, and you can stop me here if you have to, but I'm pretty sure from a lot of things that I heard, is that there's drugs being dealt out of that house. That random cars all the time are pulling up, all right, and then leaving very quickly. So I don't know what that's all about, all right? But it's just, the neighborhood is just a mess because of this kid. And I mean, and I hate it because, you know, older people that had moved out of there, and younger people moving in with children, small dogs, or whatever, are afraid to walk down the street because of this kid. And he's not a kid, he's 41 years old. And evidently, he's been in trouble for many, many years, even way before I got there. I just wanted to share a couple of the things that he posted.
Dick, can you tell the board what the SPCA told you they're doing about the 10-day quarantine? Because what we understand, they did not start, they claim they didn't start the 10-day quarantine until May 22nd, because they couldn't identify the dog, which makes no sense. How could they not identify the dog as the day you called when you've been complaining about the dog? Like, that made no sense to me. So from May 8th to May 22nd, they did nothing. And then May 22nd started the 10-day quarantine, which I guess we're still in, or no, I guess we're out.
Well, supposedly Sarah lives in our neighborhood. David, what, his sister brought the dog home today?
I've seen the dog on the property.
Was there some initial confusion as to which dog it was? Because I understand it's obviously more than one dog on this property.
Right, and I said that it was brown and white spots, or silver spots, whatever it was.
So you identified the dog to the SPCA? You came from...
Yes. And then, I guess his mother told the SPCA that he was not there that day, that she was there with the dog. Now, I was there, I know what happened, and I know who was there, because I asked both of them about the shots.
Did you report the incident to the police the same day?
Same day, yeah.
Did the police come out?
The police came immediately. So after I got bit, I was right around the corner from my house, so I walked up to the house. I guess my wife, did you call the ambulance?
I just called.
So then the ambulance and the police showed up. I didn't need the ambulance, I just needed to get to them, you know, get stitches, but it was not a big deal to me, but I know how my wife did, she gets nervous.
So rather read out some further postings he's made on Nextdoor or Facebook, or wherever, I think we understand the picture, given the conversation we had at the last meeting. So I'd like to ask Chief, and I'm gonna put you on the spot here, because I know you don't have the incident report in front of you, do you have anything to, for that specific day of the incident, do you recall any particular feedback or report or next steps to the police taking?
The specific incident was turned over to the SPCA, dog bite incident. But since then, since the last meeting where we talked about it in public, about what was going on, we are looking into the dangerous dog aspect, and that's not something that anyone can just declare, has to go court, and the judge has to declare a dangerous dog. In the meeting, Chief and I were talking about looking forward or not with that.
Just so I'm clear, whenever police responded, you know, would they have gone to the homeowner's, to the residence, and asked to see the owner of his dog? And were they told that the gentleman was not present at that time, or would that be in the detail?
The report does not say he wasn't present. I don't recall that says he was, or it doesn't say he wasn't. But I think they spoke to them all.
Is he on parole for not having any contact with police? For not having contact with... Yeah, he's not supposed to have any contact with police, and that's why I think he was hiding in the house. I don't know where he's at.
Who has the license for dogs? Are they in the mom's name, or are they...
There is no license.
So the, yeah, the medical paperwork on the dog that this gentleman is the sister's dog, according to the paperwork.
But neither of the dogs have proper licenses?
I don't know.
You guys know? The names of the dogs?
Sarah, you know. Yeah. The neighbor charged, yeah, the sister was charged, no license for Bodhi, the dog that bit Steve. I don't know about Scooby.
As you were sort of the assistant that had him on day eight, and you got bit, the ambulance came, did you go to the hospital?
I did, but my wife, we went over together, they stitched me up when I came home.
Okay, were you treated there at the hospital?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I mean, one of the follow-ups from the last meeting was for folks in the neighborhood to provide you, Kristin and the police, with a record of incidents, even if they haven't been documented today. Have you received further information?
I got three. Sarah sent me a bunch, I appreciate that, some videos, and then two other people sent me things, so I didn't get as many as I was hoping.
I got three also.
Seven, same three, yeah. So if you could encourage your neighbors, I know it's not easy, but they can remain anonymous, but not subject to the right to know, nobody gets to see them except for the township.
Sir, you wanted to say something?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just state your full name, please.
And sir, can I dispel your last name for the record?
C-O-N-J-A-R.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Sarah Petro, and I live in the same neighborhood as Steve and a few of the neighbors that have come today. So I thought, since the last meeting, it would be worthwhile attending this one, since there have been updates on the bite, of course, which Steve just shared, but it was only four days later after the meeting here that the dog was off-leash again on my property, with, which, they have three dogs there, so they were, you know, charging at my fence and my own dog, I was just in the backyard, this is a Sunday. And I guess, I mean, that's one thing, right? Like, it's just gonna keep happening. But the SPCA, I also spoke to them the other week, and their response, similar to what Steve and Beth have mentioned, is that they've been super flippant, they've told neighbors that we need to get over it, it's just a dog bite, which has proven to be extremely unhelpful for those of us that are in fear of getting attacked by this dog again.
Sarah, let me ask you, you mean the SPCA has been flippant, not the property owners?
Correct. It was Officer Aikoff that I spoke to on the phone, who's handling this investigation, this investigation which is now separate to the dog bite. So I guess, you know, I'll summarize it in just a few IDing facts. We have a dangerous dog running around in our neighborhood that has attacked a human being. The owners or the handlers, it may not be the owner of the dog on paper, but the handler of this dog and the people responsible cannot be trusted with such dangerous animals. It doesn't matter if he's been laying low for the past week, this has happened time and time again since I moved to this neighborhood in 2018. And I think we as residents, you know, have reached out to as many viable authority figures as we, you know, have been able to get hold of, and Kristin and the chief have been extremely helpful, you know, capturing that information. I think what I would hope to be the outcome is that the dog is listed as a dangerous dog to enforce the control and handover of this animal. And I appreciate that you guys are meeting on Thursday to discuss, but since there have been updates, I thought I'd share them.
Let me ask you a question. Has there been any, to your knowledge, any retaliation as a result of either the last meeting, or any known postings or anything, or going to the police, or anything that you're aware of?
You know, I experienced, no, not necessarily retaliation, I mean, we didn't even report this to the police, because it seemed so minor. I was walking down the street, I see Josh and the dog that hasn't yet bit an individual. He sees myself and my boyfriend, we're walking our dog, and he just drops the leash. He looks a step directly in the eye and drops the leash on his dog. We immediately turned around, we had been having a conversation, I, you know, I wanted to get home, you know, I was doing this out of my own safety, but, I mean, we didn't see a need in reporting it, because we hadn't captured that on video. You know, it was a 10-second stint, but I figured...
Could you send those back to me?
Okay.
Stayed out of time.
Yeah, I was just wondering, if there's anything with more documentation we can have better, so if there's any retaliation on any neighbors that we can...
Don't think that anything is not significantly amount to report.
Exactly.
So that happened in the week between, I think, the last meeting and then the dog charging onto my property on May 21st.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So my reflection of the last meeting, the next steps were twofold. One was this documenting all these incidents that you had some information about, going back as far as you had, you know, memory of them, and obviously including this, the most recent one should be useful. And Kristin, you were gonna follow up in addition to understand better the whole situation with respect to dangerous dog, and if there was any other behaviors that were being exhibited by this individual that would be, you know, falling foul by the laws, etc. So I don't know if there's any update, whether you stood up...
We're gonna be with the chief, I'll talk to the chief and Kristin Thursday, and then we'll run it through the board.
Can anyone explain to me who brings the issue of a dog being dangerous to the courts?
It can be the SPCA, it can be the dog warden, it can be the police.
Okay, so does anyone have experience here with how the SPCA generally handles dog issues, dangerous dog issues? Is this fairly...
They don't care.
They don't seem to...
No, I think if we're gonna proceed that way, we're gonna go.
Yeah, my advice on what I've seen so far, we cannot rely, that's, we cannot rely upon the SPCA. The police and the township have to take this matter if you choose to do this, and you gotta run with it. Because you're not gonna get, and I, my colleague, Ally, had hosted conversations, and they treated her the same way, sort of flipped, I'm like, what's the big deal? It's a dog bite, get over it. That's sort of how she characterized the conversation.
Okay. So really, what's gonna happen next? You're gonna meet on Thursday, and you're gonna report back as to what this, what information is suggested for the court.
Certainly. You can talk about it.
I was just gonna say, maybe worth adding that, I think Beth and Steve aren't going to court because they charged the mother and the sister with the dog bite.
And it's just tickets, basically.
Right.
No license and lack of confinement, nothing about dropping the leash, nothing about the harassment, nothing about the bite.
But it's not too bad if the police can do something about that.
They cited the wrong person.
They can talk about that.
Yeah.
They cited the mom, right?
Well, that's why I was asking a question about whose dog is, if it's in a licensed name.
I guess even if the dog is named, it's not his name, but we have an individual and a resident in the neighborhood handling the dog.
Right. No.
Yeah, is there, is there an avenue that we can take then, or is that...
I think that's how they set the law, turn property issues against the dog.
But Steve claims that Josh was the one handling the dog when he got bit.
The dog just got loose, and we saw Josh go, basically...
He was hiding in that little toad on the side of their house.
With the dog.
And as I walked by, he let that, that's what I'm saying, he let that dog go, that dog came and attacked me and ran right back to him. So if he didn't give them a command, why would that dog have stayed there and kept trying to get me? I don't understand that. Like, I would think that if the dog bit you, he would keep coming and biting you, but...
Afraid I'm not an expert.
Not either, but I'll tell you, I just thought it was weird, that he ran, hit me, and then went right back to him.
Well, some people at the last meeting said that they're using their dogs as weapons, that sounds like that's what he was doing. He was watching you, he saw you, he let the dog go, just like you were walking down the street. He purposely let the dog go to go after you both and your dog.
So if this goes to court, so if the police take this issue to a judge, then who ends up going to testify against?
All of us.
Josh.
All of you.
Well, let's be straight, this dangerous dog isn't against Josh, it's against the dog.
It requires them to then take certain measures with respect to the dog, and then if they violate those measures, if the dog is...
If you're not fit, it's a different dog.
Is the sister to be required to appear in court, since she's the owner?
That's what we have to sort this through.
Yeah, she's a different dog.
Okay, so I mean, in general, we're moving in a direction where we see this is going to be addressed in court.
That's the goal.
Okay. The SPCA, though, given the fact that they're finding the wrong person, I mean, and the mom can claim that she owns the home, she owns the property, I mean, she stood idly by, and that's actually in the video that I sent to Kristin, she's waiting for Josh to come and collect the pit bull, again, the one that bit Steve. So, and then, I mean, she's right before the police came, she's trying to tell us, you're making our lives so difficult by calling the police, you know, and she's referencing her son. She knows that, you know, he is likely the one terrorizing individuals with this dog. So I just wanted to make that known as well, and sort of, you know, an area of confusion in terms of, well, if, you know, his mother pays the fine, if his mother goes to court, that's not addressing the issue, which is that, I can look like, that one of the residents, the son of Chris Noel, he's been charged, is not, he is not receiving, you know, any sort of...
Yeah.
I think the issue is that any day this dog could end up biting somebody else. At the current moment, because it's not been taken away, and there's nothing else happening there. So I think this course of action, we're talking about hopefully, we're under control.
I guess there's nothing we can do, the handler, because my concern is, this is just Band-Aid.
Yes.
Band-Aid to the full problem here, because it's really the...
That's one of the things we're meeting about.
Okay. It's really the handler.
For other issues, other than just the name of the dog situation, in terms of behaviors of individuals involved, of what might be prosecuted.
There's nothing stopping him, although he has another dog after this incident.
We were saying, so we recommend this dog, he's gonna go get five other dogs, just to aggravate us. So we need a solution for Josh, not for the dog.
Yeah, that's not, that's not an easy...
There's a lot of people with mental issues that you can't, you have to find a crime that they're committing. So the dog is right now what we're focusing on. And what I just said to Chris was that, I believe the statutes that I have in front of me, so I weren't prepared to speak about publicly, is that it's not just the owner who has the license for the dog, it's people that are in possession or control of the dog, can be held accountable. I think you go after everybody and anybody here, the sister, the mom, the son. You go after, you make it, you make it, continue to cite them for every incident that we can, we can, so that it gets to be an aggravation where they cannot afford to pay the fines, and they have to change their behavior. That's gonna be our approach, I think, in addition to trying to declare the certain dog names. That's my suggested approach. So that's why I'm saying, if you know of anyone else out there that has incidents that could potentially be cited, you know, if they weren't seven years ago, for example, let's learn about them, so we can pile it on, because we have to get their attention to the point where they feel motivated to change their behavior.
I think he likes terrorizing the neighborhood. I would do that.
Then at that point, it becomes something more, potentially, under another crime, and but we need, unfortunately, I'm not saying we need to...
Just the neighbor acted.
If I could just interrupt, so if we have quite a good picture here, we have a course of action as to the way forward, is there anything that is missing in terms of comment that is gonna provide new information that we've not already heard tonight?
I have a question. Could we submit something that is kind of like hearsay? He told a neighbor that Bodhi killed his own mother, the dog, not his mom, the dog's mom, twice, but she's not here tonight. Can she just repeat that and document it? No?
I mean, you can document it, that's fine. Though we could ever prove it is something, but sure, document it.
But she said Josh told her that twice.
I mean, my advice again is, I mean, Ms. Petro, you mentioned an incident happened recently that you thought was so trivial, you weren't gonna bother documenting it. These are the things you need to document, because the body of information is what will ultimately weigh on what we can do, so...
Yeah, I did report when the dog charged my dog.
Okay, all right, thank you. So you have anything to add, or is it just a confirmation of what we've already discussed?
Yeah, this is something I've reported, the incident that I had with, and he chased myself and my daughter, you know, with the dog. This happened a year ago, I did report, and it's all on a report, but he, once again, he saw Nextdoor after this happened, and he said, "I tried to warn you all about going by my house all the time with your little dog. Bodhi doesn't like to be ignored, is what you heard at six this morning, sorry, but you neighbors would rather call the cops on me than understand my warning." So I mean, I think, you know, not to downplay Steve's voice, but if that was a kid, I think there'd be a different story right now, there would be a whole, there'd be, Action News would be there, and there'd be, you know, further progress. I mean, I know it's, it's coming, but I, when I got into a conversation, one conversation with Yelmash, because he started on me after he chased us, and I said, "You better get that dog on a leash, or he's gonna bite somebody." Sure enough, he bit Steve. But if that was a 10-year-old kid walking by there with his dad, Channel 6 Action News would be at the house, there'd be cops surrounding that place, and it just seems like the wheels of justice just go in slow motion. I know mental illness has a lot to do with it, but he's smart enough to, you know, to tell everybody on Nextdoor, you know, warning everybody that, you know, he can walk the neighborhood, and he can do this, and he can do that. I mean, he's, I'm sure, I don't have anything against him, and mental illness is a big thing, but I think it's, it's getting to the point now where, like, you know, Steve took a bite, you know, but if it was a kid, I think it'd be a whole different ballgame. I'm just putting it out there. I mean, it's, it's a dangerous situation, and there's people going, we live on Long Road, and there's, everybody walks their dog up by our house now, because they don't even wanna go there. They don't even wanna get by there. And I told everybody to the ball field on a Saturday morning, I said, "Don't go..."
But she said Josh told her that twice.
I mean, my advice again is, I mean, Ms. Petro, you mentioned an incident happened recently that you thought was so trivial, you weren't going to bother documenting it. These are the things you need to document, because the body of information is what will ultimately weigh on what we can do, so.
I did report when the dog charged my dog.
Thank you. So you have anything to add, or is it just a confirmation? Go ahead.
The incident that I had with him, he chased myself and my daughter, you know, with the dog. This happened a year ago, I did report it, it's all on a report, but he, once again, he saw next door after this happened, he said, I tried to warn you all about going by my house all the time with your little dog. Bodhi doesn't like to be ignored, it's what you heard at six this morning, sorry, but you neighbors would rather call the cops on me than understand my warning. So I mean, I think, you know, not to downplay Steve's voice, but if that was a kid, I think there'd be a different story right now, there would be a whole, there'd be, Action News would be there, and there'd be, you know, further progress. I mean, I know it's, it's coming, but I, when I got into a conversation, one conversation with Yelma, she started on me after he chased us, and I said, you better get that dog on a leash, he was going to bite somebody, sure enough, he bit Steve. But if that was a 10-year-old kid walking by there with his dad, Channel 6 Action News would be at the house, there'd be cops around that place. And it just seems like the wheels of justice just go in slow motion. I know mental illness has a lot to do with it, but he's smart enough to, you know, to tell everybody on next door, you know, warning everybody that, you know, he can walk the neighborhood, and he can do this, and he can do that. I mean, he's, I'm sure, I don't have anything against him, and mental illness is a big thing, but I think it's, it's getting to the point now where, like, you know, Steve took a bite, you know, but if it was a kid, I think it'd be a whole different ballgame. I'm just putting it out there. I mean, it's, it's a dangerous situation, and there's people going, we live on Long Road, and there's people, everybody walks their dog up by our house now, because they don't even want to go there. They don't even want to get by there. And I told everybody at the ball field on a Saturday morning, I said, don't go by there.
You all have certainly got our attention, and as you've heard tonight, we are trying to work together to, between the police and the solicitor, to determine what can be done to the fullest extent of law, so we'll keep your posters to where we go next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment tonight? Very good, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is item number four. Discussion and possible appointment of Jennifer Polinoli as Assistant Township Secretary and Deputy Open Records Officer. First of all, welcome, Jennifer, to the township. Thank you for joining us. Glad to see you here. So you were recently hired as our Executive Assistant to the Township Manager, and before us tonight is the decision is to appoint you as the Assistant Township Secretary, Secretary and Deputy Open Records Officer. Chris, have you any comment?
Mr. Chairman, I think you summed it up pretty well. Jennifer brings with her experience necessary to execute on both these tasks, and I think she'll do very, very well. She's been here for about a week, and she's been doing very well.
All right. So I'll make the motion to appoint Jennifer Polinoli as Assistant Township Secretary and Deputy Open Records Officer for a second.
One second.
Thank you, John. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Is there any public comment or questions? Very good, we're ready to take the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. I hope you know what you put yourself in for. Okay, next is agenda item number five, which is discussion and possible approval of a waiver from Section 71-18K2 of the West Ocean Township Stormwater Management Ordinance for a proposed project at 895 Fernhill Road. Brian.
Good evening. Tonight before you is a waiver for 895 Fernhill Road, which is this parcel 52-37171.1C. Proposal for the property to add an additional warehouse building opposite of the current building. Stormwater design for the project is to place the stormwater part of it under the parking lot, and there'll be a control measure in this area where I'm highlighting it adjacent to the Fernhill Road right away. The plan of, as developments I show you here, here's the new building on the plan, here's the existing building. And the design for the stormwater is to provide stormwater under the parking lot in the center here, and then in area of infiltration and right here between the new building and Fernhill Road. The ordinance requires a setback of 10 feet from the right way. They do not have the clearance to get that to fit within that area, and I was wanting to here tonight to request a waiver of the setback from the right way.
Okay, so could you, could you just explain a little bit about this current stormwater management and what's changing? Is the, is that an underground storage, stormwater between the two buildings, and then is it released? What's going on there, Brian? Can you give us an explanation?
Actually, Adam Brower was the. Good evening, Adam Brower with Indian Ocean Associates. So yes, to answer your question, and Brian certainly set it up well. You have above, between the two buildings, you have a underground stormwater management system. You did infiltration testing. The area, I'll say to the right, is where there were suitable soils, so there's some partial infiltration in that area. That wasn't enough to meet the volume control requirements for all the improvements being done. So what you have between the road and the new system, thanks Brian, is a, I'll say a shallow rain garden, it's a several-foot-deep system. I'm sorry, you asked about the discharge from the pipe storage. You do have a pipe discharging from the, thank you, from the pipe storage to right above the rain garden. That then goes directly, pretty much opposite the crosspipe underneath Fernhill Road, and the discharge point is at the 10-foot, for point of reference. The rain garden is set up with a berm running along the right way, and it will fill up. It's not taking substantial flow, it's taking the swale and off-site flow from below the bottom of the building, I'll say, runs into that system. When it fills up, it'll go over the berm, and then there's actually a drainage swale between the edge of the road and the right way. It's actually in the right way. So the water will not go out onto the road. It discharges into that swale, which then goes to that crosspipe we were just talking about.
Is there just one swale there?
Correct, one swale.
Okay, and that's the one that's on the right way?
Correct.
Do these improvements address the, bring the whole property up to current stormwater best management practices? Or are they only dealing with the new impervious coverage of the building?
Do you want me to answer that before you, Adam? So the ordinance only requires you to address the stormwater for the new improvements, and it is designed to meet the, also, it's designed to account, this shaded area here is an area where they're going to be adjusting the area of the asphalt, adjusting the elevation, and that area is also included in stormwater calculations. So this is an area that would not normally need to be included, because it's existing impervious, but they have included it because of the ordinance requirements.
Is that going to change the flow to the other areas around that?
No.
Especially with the swale?
The stormwater requires you to meet or exceed, which basically means you, if whatever's being released today, you have to release equal to or less than that amount tomorrow.
And it all, today, another time, maybe the very front of the driveway, for the most part, it drains and goes to that order link to the crosspipe, and that it'll continue to do that. So it's not, I think, to your question, we're going off in another direction.
Or changing top of, yeah, top of the area.
Exactly. It all goes either directly to that crosspipe or to the swale.
So the specific way that we're talking about it is, could you just show it again, Brian?
Your attached board, the attached ordinance, this line I'm tracing right here is the right way. The ordinance requires that infiltration facility setback 10 feet from the right way.
That's right up against it.
They're, they're stuck between the building and the right way, and they try to squeeze the facility as far as they can.
And I may, one thing I didn't point out previously, but the right way for Fernhill actually is a little bit wider than typical, it's actually 80 feet. So the right way line, give or take, but it's basically 25 feet from the edge of the road. So it's actually offset more than what you might typically encounter, so we're not, I point that out to say we're not putting the system right next to the road. There's actually quite a distance from that.
How far to the cartway?
I'm sorry?
What's the distance, the setback from the edge of cartway to where this is?
Is that the 25 feet that's mentioned?
Yeah, that's 25.
And the swale on that?
It might be two foot short, and the cartway might actually be 27 or something, but say 25.
So how many feet are we actually asking for additional?
So instead of being 10 feet from the right way, he's asking to be.
Pretty much adjacent.
Pretty much adjacent to it.
Okay.
Is it right?
To the right way.
What are the negative aspects of being right up to the berm versus 10 feet away, which is what we're required to go?
In, in this instance, there is no negative impact because of how far the property is from the end of the road.
But there would be if the road got widened, if there actually be cartway in that 80 feet, then.
There could be, the right way, if the state chooses to widen the road, the road could be widened that.
And it would go right over the infiltration?
It would not go over. It could stay within the right way, it could be adjacent to the stormwater structure.
So the purpose of the tow section is to make sure that your infiltration basins are far enough away from basically road surface?
Yeah, where could be impacted?
Well, you mentioned, if it would fail, or it would overflow, it would be going into a road. But here, the cartway right away from Fernhill is so much bigger than where the actual paved road is. But the downside is, you don't know if Fernhill would be widened, the cartway of the road actually be widened, so that this is close to an actual paved surface. It's probably not likely, but.
In that, in that section of Fernhill, it's probably unlikely that this block of Fernhill gets widened to the point where you wouldn't have, that the cartway would be widened so wide that it would be adjacent.
And if it was, the worst case scenario, we'd have to find another alternative.
No, we wouldn't be able to at that point to be grandfathered in, if it were on the bill.
But that expansion, but there's a swale it would cover as well, right, so.
Yeah, if they widen the road to 25 feet, they would have to put in a stormwater connection.
That's true.
Yeah, that's true.
So I just want to be clear about the function that you said there, the rain garden and the basin that you're talking about putting in? So the rain garden, if that overflows, is into the basin? Sort of, like, how are they related? And then, did you say?
The rain garden is basically, basically, he's calling it a rain garden, I'm calling it.
They're the same system.
Okay, so it's the basin?
Correct.
And is there a pipe or something that you said flows underneath the road to separate out the other side?
So there's an existing crosspipe today under Fernhill, and there's a drainage ditch today that goes along the furniture of the property and then goes to that crosspipe. So the basin, when it, if, if it overflows, and it will, for our defense, it'll go into the drainage ditch.
Not over.
Correct. Correct. I don't, I don't know if you can, yeah, thank you, Brian.
So like our significant storm events, it's not going to?
Yeah, it's, I mean, you know, the huge difference in elevation, but the road is higher. Yeah, you can see the kind of ditch that's going through. Here's your drains, here's the drainage swale that they're maintaining, you see the front here? And that rain garden will be back in here.
So you're actually going to add the rain garden, this part of the upgrade here?
Yes.
Should actually probably be approved.
I'd like to think so, say so.
Brian, well, the new bumping house storage is designed to not keep the volume flow from increasing, right? Through that other road.
The combination of the rain garden and the underground basin meet the volume reduction requirements. And then the rate control requirements are being met strictly by the underground system.
Got it. That should be an improvement.
Yes, the basin, the underground basin, wasn't accounted for in the rate control. So whenever it does the rate controls over above what will require. So it's catching up to, to go back to your one question, now, is it taken care of existing? I wouldn't say it's fully taken care of it, but we're.
It's an improvement.
Somewhere in between.
Are there any other questions from the board? Brian, do you support the? Okay, is there any public questions?
Is that where the Accurate Tool Company is? Where the, what's called the Accurate Tool Company? No, I'm not sure where they are, but I think it's down the street, yeah.
This way or the other direction?
What's your question, Doug?
I just, I'm trying to get an idea of where that is. Press Belgrade. Oh, okay, that's, yeah. All right, thank you.
Come on, Steve.
Excuse me, are sidewalks required when you do these type of improvements on the property? I thought we were.
The ordinance does not require sidewalks.
Where does it require? Because I mean, we just did a project over by Schramm's, it requires sidewalks.
That was a street, because of the road, because if you build a road, you're required to do sidewalks. If you don't build a road, if you're just doing, if this is an improvement to existing property, the ordinance does not require.
What about what we did on West Town Road, where that company went up by the cemetery? That has a sidewalk in it. At the end of Bomar Street?
The new gymnastics building? The new gymnastics building, they just built above the cemetery?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm looking at the township is putting in, making it more walking friendly, and we don't seem to be doing that. We seem to be, have opportunities like this, and, you know, I realize it costs the property money, but you have a major street along here where people walk, okay, and they walk in the street, okay? And there's a sidewalk that could go all the way down to the medical center, where we have a corner that was put in by the state, state money, that connects to nothing. So all I'm saying is, as these projects come up, why aren't we requiring sidewalks?
Greystone actually paid for those improvements. Greystone paid for those improvements down there.
Greystone?
Yeah, that wasn't the state doing it, that was because of Greystone.
Okay, okay.
Well, like we just did with the sidewalks, that one with the neighborhood apartments? Isn't there a rule that the sidewalk has to connect to another, like, we can't, like, we wouldn't be able to just require this little stretch?
No, you can't. Your ordinance requires it, you can't.
But our ordinance doesn't currently require it, that's.
I don't know, I don't know.
I presume it does not.
To be honest, I don't know, I don't jump ahead.
Have we done the review of the land development? Yeah, so presumably, Brian, it does not require it.
The ordinance reads that it's at the discretion of the board.
Well, right now, for a sidewalk, we can fill in that swale, right? So it's like, which one's more important? I have to say, Steve, I haven't seen that many people walking on that stretch of Fernhill.
All I'm saying is, these opportunities come up, and we see them a lot, and we seem to not.
The biggest questions we get around are Route 3 connecting it walkable into Westchester, and we're trying to make that a work in progress, you know, there's only so much we can do, but if these commercial properties come up for redevelopment, obviously, it's an opportunity there, but duly noted.
Just saying you have a chance here, he wants an area, put a sidewalk.
I mean, do we have a town?
Sounds like it was an option, so.
What are your thoughts?
Well, I, I think if it was a substantial frontage, I think it would, you would at least have more, more pointing to be made, but this is a very narrow area. I think, again, you don't have a curb, so you don't want to put, you wouldn't put the sidewalk right next to the paving. It's going to be offset from a safety standpoint further into the property at that point. On that side, it is a drainage issue. You are, you're mixing the sidewalk with the drainage. There's two, clearly, there's two sides of the street, and just looking at this, I, you know, obviously I'm biased, but, you know, if I was going to pick one side, the other side looks better. I would probably look at the number of driveways, and I, to just say, put a sidewalk in, I think is.
I just want to have a look.
No, absolutely, I don't know that that, you know, I think you would have to assess it to see what makes more sense.
So the swale would go there on the south side of the road?
The swale, you can see the swale right here, in the right way.
So, but what about the north, like, straw up? What about putting something along there? That's still your property, right?
That section right there is, yeah.
So what about putting a sidewalk along that area?
The sidewalk would end at their property line right here.
And then it's a deadhead, and then there's nothing above it, just that one area, it's not connecting to anything.
No, I know. I think what you were saying is that if we keep requiring this in all of our redevelopment, then eventually we're going to have a lot of sidewalks put in, obviously.
Connect the dots, okay?
Yeah.
If you don't start putting the dots in.
And we have done this in other areas, we have done this in other projects.
I think if you have unimproved areas, you can probably anticipate at some point they're going to be developed. And again, here we are, so obviously I can't say this won't happen, but this is a different situation where you're relying on redevelopment to come in front of you. And it'll happen, absolutely, but I think at a much slower pace than if you had unimproved ground.
Westchester doesn't have any unimproved ground, but.
I know, well.
Can you tell me why that stretch would not work for a sidewalk?
That stretch right there?
Yeah.
I can't say there's a compelling reason. I do know there's a sign there that you'd have to work around, the entrance sign. I mean, literally, would it not work? I can't say literally it wouldn't. Again, I think not having a curb there does need to be offset from the road, and it is, it is going to create a situation where it's probably then going, you have to go around the signs and things like that, so.
What's the zoning for this area? Is it I-2?
Uh, two of them, one.
I mean, are there really?
I-2. So it is, it is I-2, it's industrial, and I think, you know, I can't say I know the road, I don't travel the road daily, so I really can't speak to it, but I do question how much pedestrian traffic you have on that road. So I can appreciate the point, but again, I don't know that this is an area that has high demand for pedestrian circulation.
If the law grants the waiver, that doesn't prohibit them at land development, when you come back to pull land development, to have the dialogue about the sidewalk and the park, that actually does, no, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, tonight's just, they're way back in front of the young people.
It does on the portion that he wants to put the infiltration or the rain garden, but it doesn't on the other side, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So if the waiver's granted, this section, which is the majority of the frontage, would not be able to have a sidewalk put in as well, I'm hearing?
I mean, again, you certainly have a challenge with the existing drainage there. Correct.
Okay, any board questions? Okay, any board questions? Any other public comments or questions? So is one member willing to make the motion to grant the waiver from Section seventy-one dash eighteen K two of the Stormwater Management Ordinance for this redevelopment?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tandra, just a second. Thank you, Ashley. Any final comments or questions on the motion from either the board or the public? Okay, we're going to take a vote, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? If you agree now on the motion, pass this by.
Thank you very much. See you soon.
Okay, next up is item number six, discussion regarding the installation of a solar energy array on the West Ocean Township Public Works facility known as Building D. Chris, do you want to take the lead on this one, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so before the board this evening is discussion regarding the proposed installation of a solar energy array on the Township Public Works building. Uh, the township did engage with Carol Engineering Corporation. That structural analysis completed on the roof of the Public Works building and the report indicated that it is, that the roof is capable of supporting the proposed array. I provided a copy of the report that was, that was provided to the township. Uh, subsequent to this, I reached out to Solar Energy, Solar Renewable Energy LLC to understand the next steps in the process. They outlined two options for consideration. One was to finance the project, as would be done typically with a construction project. And the other was engaging in what's referred to as a power services agreement, which would essentially operate, from what I understand, potentially operate in a similar fashion to a lease of the, of the equipment. Um, I'm not too familiar with these kinds of arrangements. I did reach out to a colleague to get a better understanding of how this would work. I have not had a chance to follow up with him, but I will do so. Um, the Sustainability Advisory Committee did meet with representatives from Solar Renewable Energy about the process and voted to recommend proceeding forward with this project. Um, I provided the presentation materials from the SAC meeting, as well as a cash flow analysis that was completed. For the power services agreement, it would be a twenty-eight year agreement with a buyout option in year six of the agreement. And then we also did a, there was also information related to a loan option that would be, that could be pursued. I did update the information that was provided by Solar Energy to accurately reflect the current rate of the township's, uh, energy costs at the municipal complex, so that's reflected in the material before the board. In the twenty-twenty-three budget, uh, there was an allocation of two hundred thousand dollars in the capital reserve fund for work related to the electrical study that was completed in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, however, this was primarily envisioned to cover the build out of infrastructure to install additional electric vehicle charging stations and associate engineering work. And to date, we've spent approximately ten thousand dollars, all associated with engineering. So if the board did want to proceed forward with this project, under the second-class township code, you may make supplemental appropriations to the budget. And I've outlined the section of the code that authorizes the board to do that. So we most likely have to, the board would most likely have to consider a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation. Um, so that is all the information that I have on this topic this evening. Um, and the cash flow analysis and the information is provided as to what the, um, how it would work on the option.
Did this, um, cost include the sewer plane?
No, this was only, this was only for Building D.
Because that would double it, right? Everything, because we're, we're, the usage, it would be six million to twenty-one, one thirty for usage.
I don't understand the question.
I guess the question is, is, did it include that?
No, we did not.
Would not, would be a lot different.
No, we didn't factor anything in with the wastewater treatment plan.
I mean, the initial study looked at not only Building D, but other roofs of the township complex, but those roofs have gables, angles.
Obstructions.
No, they're not obstructions, they're really not amenable to the installation of solar panels. Building D was the focus of our discussion with SRE and the definition of potentially viable project, which we're looking at tonight.
As well as the fact that Dave Kurtner came wrong, that when that building was designed and constructed in two thousand and twelve, it was constructed in a manner to install solar panels in the future. So it was envisioned as part of the, as part of the overall build out of that building.
We confirm that it's virtually capable of doing that.
That's correct.
That's a good piece of information. Just, just for clarification, we, we are continuing to progress the installation of the appropriate electrical systems required for EV charging at the township. So the original earmark, two hundred thousand dollars in the budget, needs to continue to be allocated towards the engineering work and the construction work associated with that. And I know that's, the work in progress is moving along. So really the focus tonight really is on the board's understanding of this scope of work and their appetite for, uh, whether there's a new project here that we would potentially allocate funds that are currently sitting in either the capital reserve or the general fund, um, towards a new project. Henry, can you swear this, Henry Alexander? I know, I've certainly individually had a conversation with him about the modeling and the analysis of the, uh, of the financials on this. Henry, do you want to make any comments around your thoughts on the particular items that make up that analysis?
I think the analysis looks very standard. Uh, it, it looks like the, uh, the cost is in, in a range that we would expect. And I don't see any issues with it. It's very straightforward. It, uh, it pays for itself over the life of the contract.
I mean, there's some individual elements in the, the analysis that are definitely things we need to consider and adjust. So for example, Chris, you mentioned the cost of electricity is a little higher than what's in the analysis.
I believe the analysis was at six point six cents per kilowatt hour, the initial analysis, and the current agreement that the board approved in December is seven point four two cents per kilowatt hour.
And the model includes a kind of inflationary two and a half percent every year throughout the, the analysis. Uh, the value they use for the SRECs that are generated is a little optimistic, although that currently reflects the value that is obtained in that market today. Over the last ten years, Henry, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that's really been a much lower number, often in the single digits, not in the forty-five range that they've used in this. So if you look at the permutations of the financial model, you can certainly model a lower number for that. But on the positive side, we have, we have the funds available to finance a project of this size and we would not need to borrow money and have an interest-bearing element, which is shown in this analysis. So we could, we can get that side of it and have additional savings. And then the final point I would make is although this can't, this analysis shows what I would presume is a maintenance agreement with SRE, I find that value to be quite high for the amount of work that will be necessary. And I think, again, you could certainly have a different arrangement that would not be, cost as much as shown in this analysis. So overall, if you, if you kind of go through those elements, you end up with a project that, uh, to Henry's point, definitely over its life will be cash flow positive, quite substantial in the order, in my opinion, of around half a million to a million dollars, depending on electricity prices, SREC values, et cetera. So it's, it's a, a good project for that, from that sense, of course. Like any project that involves capital equipment, there is an upfront investment. So in the first few years, it's cash flow negative and then in terms of positive hours, uh, you continue to save money over the years. I do have some questions personally around how we would pursue this project. So I believe the IRA allows us to, um, take advantage of the thirty percent credit that is available for these types of project, uh, which is a refund on thirty percent of the construction cost. Uh, there are other factors that might increase that amount, but let's just say i- instead of traditionally where you had to be a taxpaying entity to get these benefits, I believe the IRA, although it's not a hundred percent fully, um, detailed yet, I believe it's most likely that we would be able to fund this from day one if we wanted. And if not, if that is not the case, clearly you still have the option of the buyout in year six, um, with funds that we have available to us. Uh, the other questions I have are related to how to select a turnkey vendor for this. So SRE is one, uh, company that has obviously been willing to do some work and provide this kind of level of information. I, I'm curious as to whether there are other Co-Stars vendors that we could seek pricing from. Because to Henry's point, this is one number and we should at least get one or two more numbers if possible to understand the actual capital cost of this project to, to go forward. So those are some of the questions I have. Board, what else do you think?
Let me jump in here. I, SRE suggests two options to pursue, um, the funding for the, this particular project, which I think we need to do, just a question how to do it. One is to do the PSA, the power service agreement, where basically they take all the costs and bear all of the burden financially for installing the solar panels, but then they own it too. Uh, and then the second option would be to consider this just as a capital, um, capital project, like any other, we may do. I, I noticed, Chris, that you reached out to one of the, um, townships that had utilized SRE for one of their projects, successful had a township, and I found that their email that they responded to you was rather interesting because they went with the PSA, I believe.
And that was, that was before Mr. Perboca's time with them, that predated him. So he couldn't really tell me, I think he notes that in his email, he couldn't really tell me specifically about like the PSA and how it came about. And as I said earlier, I'm going to follow, I'm going to follow up with him.
And he's actually having a meeting with SRE to see where the status is with the township as far as.
That's correct.
The cost benefit analysis for this particular project. And he's supposed to be getting back to you.
That's correct.
Okay, so he has not done that yet?
He called me late, late today and I'm going to follow up with him tomorrow.
I would really like to hear what he has to say, his perspective on this. Now, there's a couple of other projects that SRE has done in Pennsylvania, Norah Allen Township and also East Pensboro. Uh, can we reach out to them also to see what their experience has been with SRE and how they were about financing this project? I think that would be a lot of good information for this board to consider as we move forward, you know, with this project. So those are the two considerations that I would have. How best should we, which option should we pursue? And just get some information from some of these other townships that have already done this.
Um, Chair, I have two things off if I can. Um, I mean, maybe you can help me with this one too, or Dave or somebody. Um, the thing I'm concerned with is it says the evaluation is limited to the roof framing and does not include the compatibility of the electrical system with the solar collection system, the capability of the collection system to supply operational power needs and the structural capability of the framework that supports the panel above the roof or any other aspect of the solar collection system. Is that something we need to be concerned with because all of that's been happening?
Uh, to me, quite like John, is, yeah, that sounds like a disclaimer about something that was presented with no information on. And that actually would not, most of that would not actually be available until the system is designed. I mean, the structural framing of the, to support the panels is not something that's been done at this point. That's why you would need a company like SRE or someone else to actually do the design work before that could be done.
Okay, so we still, right now, so we still don't want to know.
Well, within, within, the way professional engineers cage everything in, no absolute guarantee. He kind of said, the only thing I've seen is just like it would be doable. Uh, he's not going to say a hundred percent, speaking my reputation, I don't think.
I didn't totally say that, we really, we're pretty sure.
You agree, Dave?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, not giving themselves out until they have all the.
T, you have another question?
Um, is there any property insurance cost for the rest?
I'd assume it would be like any time, any kind of building, that any sort of structure that we would construct would be covered under our property liability insurance. And if we go under the PSA, I mean, it might be, since there are any equipment, it would be a liability insurance.
But you would want to notify your, if you went.
We would notify.
Project, you'd have to let your insurance carrier know that you've changed the roof to how he's on it.
Right.
I can, I can check with our.
That was one of our, I just wondered if there's any cost to us associated with that, that we need extra insurance or anything?
No, the one, the one thing, when we did the Co-Stars energy procurement, that's why we did the two-year, because the current contract we're under doesn't have a solar buyback on it. So.
I agree, Dave.
There was, there's certain contracts in the discussion we had with, with Scott. We need to change the contract. And that was one of the reasons we did the two-year, because we knew we were looking at solar here, um, for a buyback for, to sell the energy back out to PICO. That's a different contract than what we're going to.
But my understanding is what we can get from this, this array on Building D is not going to meet the full energy needs of this complex. And so it's almost impossible that we can come with a scenario where we would be net metering back into grid with this amount of panels.
Okay, so if we can just cover the insurance, just to find out. If there's any possible, maybe there's not, maybe you just need to be notified.
Any other questions?
No, I just like your idea of maybe checking with a couple of other vendors.
Yeah, I want to get back to that in a minute, but I just want to address this issue of PSA versus paying for it ourselves upfront. So credit me if I'm wrong, Henry, because I know you're close to this, but until the most recent legislation was passed, the IRA, a, an organization that did not pay federal taxes like township was unable to avail itself of the twenty, twenty-five percent tax credits that were available for construction of these type of systems. And therefore, the examples that we'd probably like to get information on, et cetera, will almost always have been under this PSA type arrangement where through a third party that can access those tax benefits and credits, uh, and lower therefore the overall cost to the client. The most, it was most likely going to be under a PSA type arrangement. Would you agree, Henry?
Yes, and that is what is in works to change at this time. But there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of decisions being made at federal levels. What rules for that, for EVs, for solar, for, uh, heat pumps? There are all sorts of wrinkles going, uh, coming out of the government. So SRE is saying, until we know that you can receive the equivalent of a tax code, we're thinking in terms of five years of the day, because that's the amount of time that the official bond holder has to keep in, in order to satisfy certain requirements.
Yep. But either way, the financials, as we look at this model, are certainly favorable, so over the life of the project.
No, this, this, this is a no-brainer. It's just how do we craft the best deal we could want to get?
Well, so in SRE's presentation here, they said PICO's releasing big information on June first. They're talking about Act one twenty-nine, Solar Relations, is that?
And that, that would be something different.
It's different.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a federal government IRA, the clarification of the law, how that's going to affect a project like this. Um, just going back to Co-Stars and SRE as a vendor on there, we don't know yet whether there are vendors who can do a turnkey project like SRE, is that correct?
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of it, but we can.
That is a key follow-up. Um, there you are, Chris, we, we want to use Co-Stars for this type of, of project cause. In our experience, and other types of project, especially where you've got everybody who's broadly would be out there telling you to do a solar project for you. We don't want to end up with a situation where we're accepting a bid from a contractor who does not really have the, the capability to deliver this effectively. Co-Stars, through its process of qualification of vendors and, you know, acceptance of pricing, et cetera, has kind of sorted that out and is able to offer quality suppliers and contractors for this type of work. Would you agree?
Yeah, you can, you can check references and go with reference.
I mean, but we still want, to Henry's point, you know, some of the numbers in here look a little on the higher end of the rage, range in terms of the cost for the installation. So we certainly want to just find out how to get competitive pricing for this type of proposal. And I get out, I don't know how to do it, but we'll have to look at Co-Stars and see what else is out there. I can't believe these are the only approved Co-Stars vendors for this type of work.
I guess we have to keep in mind responsible contractor requirements too for this project, right?
Uh, would be, would be subdued.
Would not be subdued, okay.
It's not required under Section thirty-one.
But we can certainly say that the, the board is interested in proposals from Co-Stars contractors that could satisfy our responsible contractor requirements.
Right, that's my point.
We can look at what cases those they have to do that as part of an inquiry to what cost can we pay? Yeah. Okay. So what are the next steps, Nancy, please?
So I heard, I heard three action items. One was to check other possible Co-Stars vendors and meet with them and see what the pricing information was. Check with Lower Allen Township and East Pensboro Township regarding their experience with SRE and contact our insurance company to find out if any additional coverage for the solar array would be necessary.
Okay. And in terms of, if, if we get answers to those questions that continue to move this project forward, do we also need Christine to weigh in on what we would do in terms of using the capital reserve fund as is, or that we can move more funds to the capital reserve from general fund, and, you know, how do we manage the supplemental budget request? I can't assume we'd be able to start this project, you know, later this, sometime later this year, that I don't know if there's gonna be milestone payments associated with the, the contractor, I know they said the equipment was, you know, 12 month lead time, so it's not like it's gonna happen tomorrow, but it might still be payments due this year or whatever agreement with whoever we go with, that would require some funding to have it approved by the board.
I can speak with, Christina's out next Tuesday, so I can speak with her about that.
And under the Co-Stars, just to make sure, responsible contractor, under the category.
Any other questions? There's any public comments or questions on what we've been discussing, Steve?
Yeah, um, I would suggest a couple more things. I would suggest you do look at what it would cost to basically buy the systems outright with a 30% tax credit, and, uh, just to do your cost analysis on return on investment, because you might find that your payback is much quicker, and then once you hit that, say, 10-year mark, then it's all profit or benefit to the township. Uh, the other thing I would look at is, um, some other areas in the township that this might be more, um, better located. Uh, I'm not sure that the roof of, the roofs of our buildings over here are the best spot in the township. Ground-based systems can be much more efficient and less expensive to install, um, for example, across the street over here we have a park, and that's a park, but it's not really used well. That way it might facilitate a ground-based system, uh, maybe around the sewer authority buildings, um, and, you know, you're gonna spend a lot of money here one way or another, and you really wanna look, I believe, all the options you have. Um, the other thing that this company should have given you was some sort of number on the percentage of solar gain you're gonna get, the way the panels are located. That's usually the first thing these solar companies will do, they'll come out and they'll get a literally, they don't get their roof anymore, they did online, but they'll literally look at it, and they'll look at the angles, they'll look at a year's worth of, um, where the sun travels, and they'll say, you know, you're gonna get 70% or 80% or 85% gain from the system. And that's an important number in the long run, because, you know, if you get 95% gain versus 70% gain, you're gonna get a lot more money back. These are just things I went through when I put my system on my roof 13 years ago. You're also very, it's, it's a very smart idea to find a solar company that's been in business for a while. Mine stopped, had to have my system on my roof for about five years, and I had to find another company to do the service for it. So, that's, that's also very important. So whatever Co-Stars can bring to this, that's great, but you wanna look at a company with longevity, not the guy that's selling panels to home deep, okay? Um, just, but I think those are some of the things that, if you really wanna dig deep into this, and I totally agree with the township doing this, but I think there's a lot more homework there to do.
So if I, so you made three points there, Steve, on the, the first one, shortcut ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to touch on your idea of maybe putting the ground-based arrays in a park or something like that. I know that during a presentation that I've already made, we discussed, and I think there was some kind of rule, like it needs to be within a mile
Two miles, two miles.
Two.
And it actually takes up five acres.
Of the municipal complex.
Yep.
But I guess the whole idea behind that would be extra solar arrays, more energy to what? Provide more energy to our complex, or to sell that to, like, I don't know why we would necessarily do that.
Yeah, that's
I'd say it would be another standalone project in my mind, Steve, if I, if we have to have executives to do that.
Not that I'm against it
Yeah.
At all, I think that it's something that we should look at.
We, we did look at the sewer authority, do you have a cue back from under Tina, about the available space for ground-wounded solar array there, and given some of the other issues facing, what quality standards that might be coming in the next 10 years, are the process units that would need to be installed, or the changes that we needed, it wasn't really a great spot to do it, um, so.
Plus we need five acres somewhere for the arrays.
Well, you need to go whatever acreage you have, right?
Yeah, one of them's five acres.
You can go to a small one.
The park.
It just, so, and then you go down to these other parks, and, you know, it starts to be, what is, what is the strategy for the park, and we have, you know, we have better ground to look into that, and, you know, maybe it can be, or maybe it can't, you know, maybe it won't be part of that, so it's certainly something we will consider, but it's not like we have lots of acres of open space in the township. But that's one, um, the whole point I made about not, you know, trying to find a, a Co-Stars qualified vendor is to try to avoid the, everybody who's brought in betting on something that you have no ideas, so the capability that ends up being a lowest bid that you have to accept, so that's trying to avoid that particular wrinkle, that was the third point you may have forgotten.
The one, the one point Steve made about was about the financial and the cash, the cash flow analysis.
Yes.
I would want any, just my own mind, I would want any sort of vendor that we, that comes before the board to provide a similar analysis to what SRE did, because they did provide a cash flow analysis and showed a saving, and showed a savings to us. The information that they provided showed a net cash savings of about $623,000, so I would want any, um, I would want any vendor that we present to the board to provide a similar analysis to what SRE did.
Let's charge a break, because I've gone too, they don't always
Yeah, so we may ask for performance guarantee on the system output as well, that would be part of what we sign, that's no sign up for. And to your point about the, you know, location of the panels and the sun and the, so Keystone engaged SRE originally when we first booked it, an electrical infrastructure upgrade, so they would have been trying to do some analysis of the specific geography, location, orientation, come up with the number they put in this, this proposal, and what we would do is block them into a performance guarantee of a minimum expected maximum penalty.
And when we looked at the electrical study back in 2022, one of the specific items that we asked them to evaluate was the viability of solar energy, so that was taken into the analysis for the complex that was done in 2022.
Yeah. Okay, other questions?
My question has to do with putting these on the building B, how, uh, how the maintenance and fire safety would be affected. Uh, how was the access to this roof on building B to get to these panels and maintain them to fix any problems that might occur, or, or issues with fire safety?
Yes, I would expect the design of the installation to include, you know, safe access up to the roof for inspection of the panels, et cetera, so if you apply the design, I don't think there's anything unique about building B in terms of its configuration, so in terms of fire safety and everything else, I'm sure it'll be, uh, taken into account. Actually, liability, you've got probably space inside for the inverted, to keep it out of the weather and the elements, which is a component that will fail over time to the wall. You know, the environment are better for that.
The NPA, the National Architecture Association, the code, and that, that will include, has design specifications that are minimally required, that would meet those kind of concerns, a three-foot wide walking space in between panels at certain locations, pulled out firefighters to get access.
So these panels would supply the, the, well, Chris, you just building B mainly, they're all set, will we pay them for Pico?
That's 28% for the whole complex.
Yeah. We, I mean, part of the design again is, is, uh, we've got power feed coming in, we generate our power, we need whoever does the turnkey project for us to, to take into account how it all ties together effectively.
And that's gonna include the energy charging stations, right?
Yeah, it'll be part of it, I mean, our demand's gonna be going up over time, so 28% maybe down to
Yeah.
10 by the time we finish. Henry, have we missed anything in this discussion that you wanted to bring up?
I think you've covered.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Chris, you good with the actions?
Yep, so we have four items to follow.
All right.
I just want to thank Henry, I just want
Thank Henry for all the time that you did and you put into this project, thank you very much, you're very helpful.
Thank you, I think it's great.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, which is discussion on possible approval of proposed work allocated in the West Coast Township 23 budget for upgrades to the locker rooms in the West, West Coast Township Police Department. Chris?
I'm Mr. Chairman for the board this evening, is discussion regarding the upgrade of the locker rooms in the Police Department. Uh, we've provided, uh, proposals, uh, from diversified storage solutions that totaled approximately $94,000, uh, that was divided as follows, which was about $84,000 for the men's locker room, and about $10,000 for the women's locker room. Um, and we also provided a proposed layout plan for both locker rooms. Uh, the cost for this project was authorized as part of the 2023 budget, which authorized an allocation of $90,000 for this project, uh, with the understanding that this matter would be brought back to the board for final approval prior to commencing, uh, work. Uh, the existing locker rooms in the Police Department are original to the building, um, and we also, and subsequent to this, to the preparation of the 2023 budget, both Dave and myself have received reports about the condition of the existing lockers, which have included needs to break in the various lockers that have jammed and mold growing on the clothing of the officers that have materials stored in them. And based on this, we do recommend receiving board with this project.
Okay. How else would I kick it off, have some questions, please?
I have some questions. Big cost difference, Gina Bennett and the woman, I'm just wondering why the ladies are in better condition than the men.
No. It's the size of the space.
Um, also, is this included the redesigning, or is it just like replacing of like-kind?
No, it's a, it's an improvement, uh, you lose the, right now there's benches mounted in between, the new lockers have benches integral to the design.
Okay.
Uh, so they have, uh, capacity so they can charge equipment inside their own lockers, uh, plus the, it's a space saver design, so it's a little bit better, how like the cost of the system that they have.
Okay, and did this include insulation?
Yes.
And who's gonna do the install?
The contractor.
Contractor, okay, I don't do the job, it's all mine.
I just wanted to follow up on that. What are some of the other upgrades, is it gonna be electrical, the, the vision's there to be the plug-in, plug-and-play electric, is that a part of these lockers as well?
Yeah, they, uh, they may have the special plug-in in the locker room, but we'll handle that with our usual electrician.
That's not part of the locker itself? I'm just looking at the description here, it says it's plug-and-play electric?
It's, uh, we have to write the plug, and then it'll plug.
Okay, but that would be part of the locker, can, assembly itself?
Yeah.
Would be a receptacle of some sort, from maybe USB port or something like that?
Yeah, however it's
Now, the, the current lockers themselves are falling apart basically, I mean, they're in questionable repair?
They jam, they jam from time to time, they have some rust issues.
Rust issues.
Uh, you know, they're, they're well-used, they're used seven days a week, 365 days a year or anything, they've been there quite a while.
Well, these will be rust-proof because of the humidity from the bathroom and all, or these gonna be metal again, and we're gonna have the same problem in another 10 years.
It's all there, if it's a metal-y product, I didn't see the actual sample of it.
Yeah, because I don't want it just to happen again, obviously it's gonna happen because of the nature where it's located.
1999. So 20 years old, it's loving, 20 years, 20 years.
Because you have, you do have, there aren't the showers next to the
The showers.
So we want, we wanna watch with the wood and humidity, right?
Yes, that's, that's a concern I have, so when I hear mold, does replacing the locker isn't a big
Exactly.
So why is it so humid in there, is the exhaust fan not adequate?
They have made some improvements with the air access over the years.
But if it's mold and it's closing the day, that's still way down.
That was, that was a while ago. That was in the past.
Okay.
But the, I was describing the incidents that have been told to us since the body was adopted.
Okay. That's good, so it's not mold of the day.
Exactly.
What kind of warranty comes with these new lockers?
Uh, I believe it was five years, I have to double-check, it was in the paperwork.
Are we gonna have to do flooring and painting as well, is there gonna be additional custom project?
We're tearing the old lockers out, that's all covered under building materials.
Okay.
We're tearing the lockers out, so that's the perfect time to paint in there.
Yeah.
And the flooring is original, uh,
So they put the new ones in and then floor?
Yeah, we have been replacing flooring as we go, and we do have flooring on hand to put in.
Okay, so we're gonna put the new lockers in and then repair the floor, maybe it's gonna be uniformed there, right?
Yeah.
But isn't there gonna be complete reflooring of the whole area, it's just gonna be where the lockers are?
No, it'll be a refloor of the whole locker, that area, but we already have all that to turn around.
Yep.
And what's a plug-and-play electric? What is that?
They plug it in, and the lockers plug together somehow, so they each have power for
Oh, okay.
For recharging of, you know, they're, they're in a mix.
Okay.
I mean, all the equipment that wasn't even bought up 24 years ago.
I know, I know we have some of these lockers that have benches, doesn't look like much bench to me, it's like a pretty narrow foot thing, is it really, they can take it to sit down, because, and then, some of them are, some of them are, don't have the benches, so who decides who gets the one with the bench and which one doesn't?
So Westchester has the same system.
Okay.
There are all sorts
They love it?
Yeah.
All right. But F2 versus F3, some don't have this bench, right?
So I'm gonna go with a conversation with Mike, um, because we find it, the idea was to have a bench one side or the other everywhere.
Yeah.
Very rarely, everyone in the lab would have any changes.
Okay. So it's adequate.
Even having it on one side of the locker room is better than what they have now, because they have a couple of little benches right in the middle where everybody can't use them anyway.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a question about the warranty, I can't find the information on the actual products, the work, the, the workshop and the installation is warranty for what you're for installation.
Uh, is the, Dave, have you any comments on the project? Do you think it's a good design, or are you just whatever? Very diplomatic. Any other board questions? Any public comments on the discussion? Doug?
I'm in favor of doing, doing this.
Doing this, okay.
Our, our police need to be comfortable, and just do what you need to do.
At a reasonable price, right?
Yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll have to look at that, but do the job.
Doug, you got a comment?
Yeah, I did, um, after John's comment back in December, I did take a tour, and, um, I came to the conclusion that this needs to be done. Um, and I assume that also they're gonna replace the stalls and fix the doors on the stuff.
Yeah, they get new
Okay, because it was
For the ones that
Long overdue.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, bye.
And that's included in the maintenance piece, right? You're not this particular
No, this is just a lot.
Okay. All right, well, it's, so, is there any, uh, let's see, we're looking to approve this, uh, this, this, uh, we're looking to approve the proposed work at the price that was quoted in the, uh, the provided materials, and to proceed with the project. Do I have someone to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay, at, at the cost of, uh, 91,000?
90,000. 93,800.
Okay, thank you, should make that part of the motion then, okay. Is there a second? Is there a second to Tina's motion? Thank you, actually. Any public, is there any board or public comment on the motion? And we'll take the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on the motion passes 5-0, thank you. Mark's running the project. Mark is gonna run the
Mike?
Yes, Mike, sorry. Okay, next is agenda item number eight, continued discussion on the proposed maintenance and upgrades to the shooting range for the West Coast Township Police Department. Chris, do you want to remind us where we are with the, uh, follow-up that was, uh, gonna happen from cattle engineering after the last discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, so before the board this evening is continued discussion regarding maintenance and upgrades to the shooting range, uh, for the West Coast Township Police Department. Uh, we previously discussed this matter at the May 2nd meeting. Uh, by way of background information, it was brought to our attention that the shooting range is in need of repair due to a variety of, you know, it's safety issues. Uh, Dave Woodward, Dave Woodward, Mark Bertolami, and Mark Bertolami prepared information outlining the potential cost for the work that would be needed, and we reviewed that information with Chief Carroll. As followed to that, Dave met with a structural engineer from Carroll Engineering to review the proposed design from a structural perspective, uh, provided a sketch and notes, uh, to the township. And this is largely in line with the work that was previously proposed. Uh, based on this information, Dave did revise his cost estimate for the project, which is
which is thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-eleven dollars and sixty-two cents, which is an increase from the fifteen hundred dollars from the, uh, fifteen hundred dollars from the previous estimate. Uh, and this increase was due to the, uh, cost to cover tipping fees for this disposal of the old T-one-eleven, uh, uh, beams that would be removed. Couldn't think of the right term. Uh, regards to the estimated cost, the township's twenty-twenty-three budget did allocate twenty-three thousand dollars, uh, that could be utilized. However, this includes costs towards ammunition for the police department. As such, this cost would need to be authorized by the board.
So, so that, uh, accounting number is used for police materials?
That's correct. It's for, it's, the line item that's set up is just for the, is for the range, but it includes any sort of upgrades for the range as well as the cost for ammunition for the police department.
We typically use that full amount, right?
We, we can use ten thousand of that towards these improvements.
Okay.
But the other portion will be needed for ammunition.
Are you suggesting the board only needs to authorize thirteen thousand bucks?
No, ten thousand.
Uh, ten thousand, no. Board only needs to authorize an additional twenty-two thousand dollars to?
Yes.
But not the full thirty-one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
What I would, if you were gonna authorize, I would put in a buffer because once Dave and Mark start removing material, we might find more that we can't see from the surface.
Okay. Board questions?
How big of an offer?
A ten percent increase, a ten percent?
Ten to fifteen percent, ten to fifteen percent. So if we have ten thousand.
So you got thirty-one minus ten is twenty-one plus ten percent, say twenty-three. Would that be fine? Additional twenty-three thousand?
Twenty-three, twenty-three on top of ten?
Twenty thousand.
How bad do you think it's gonna be when you start removing stuff?
I don't know. I don't wanna have to hold off and come back and say, hey, we kind of into this. It's us doing the work and we're just buying material.
About twenty-five, twenty-five plus the tent, so you're thirty-five. You've got an estimate of thirty-one, you've had a good look at it, sounds reasonable to me.
All right.
Good, yeah. Okay, so any other questions about the actual design or?
So basically, you're gonna replicate what's on the front of these panels.
Put it on the backside.
You're gonna put it on the backside, give it a little T-one-eleven, put the stone back in. Well, like the idea you had about putting that cap on there too, to keep the wood from getting in there, causing that wood to rot out of it.
Does a cap block the whole pump then? Is that what you're gonna do? Yeah, we're gonna cap it with some sort of material. We're still, we put it in that. Yeah, we're still looking at that.
Now, I know one of these products has about seven weekly time on them, so there is gonna be some time between when this is authorized and when it actually, the construction gets underway.
Okay. Any other questions?
So what, what do you think, start date could be, uh, I think you have like an eight-week timeline on the, the bolt rod?
Yeah, probably sometime in August.
Okay, and how long do you think it's gonna take?
We're hoping for two weeks, but we plan for three. Eventually, we're gonna get rain, it'll probably, it'll start.
Can you show the weather?
It's not raining.
Okay, so, uh, if we do approve this, then Christine would, uh, make a budget plus this and mine, so she would include the additional expense in the general fund as a, an addition for this particular project?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, in that we approve the, uh, the maintenance and upgrade to the shooting range for the West Ocean Police Department for the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, and that, that means the incremental amount, not the project cost again. And I will second that motion. Is there any board or public comments or questions on the motion? Very good, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on the motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Still over the project, Dave. Uh, next is agenda item number nine, which is discussion possible approval of a right-of-way in traffic signage easement agreement between Exeter nine-thirty-one South Matlock LP and West Ocean Township. And Kristen, have you do it?
Yeah, so interestingly, um, when the township approved the apartment building that Western built at nine-thirty-one South Matlock Street, part of the land development plan required the property owner to acquire, um, right-of-way and then also grant a traffic signal easement. That was done, that was approved by the township and was put into John Darris, who was representing applicants' file. John Darris retired in December of twenty-twenty-two and his colleague Allison Zara was going through his files and found the original and realized it had never been recorded. Subsequent to that, the property owner sold. So the original document was dated September twenty-three, twenty-nineteen, and the property owner's name was Eastern Matlock Partners LP. Um, this didn't get recorded. They have since sold the land to Exeter nine-thirty-one South Matlock LP. So when Allison brought this to my attention, I asked her if she would reach out to the property owner to see if they would sign the same document because that is required in the land development plan. And luckily, they did. And, uh, we have it now to sign and hopefully now record. I will promise to record it. But this is, luckily Allison went through those old files, so it was something that was, you know. I mean, the, the land development plan required it and, and contemplated it, but this is the actual deed transfer of the necessary right-of-way as well as the easement for the traffic signals and signs.
So this is a right-of-way and easement for the township to be able to access and maintain this, um, what is it, a signage thing only or it's not, it's not a light, right?
I think it's traffic signs.
Traffic sign?
Yeah, so it's a proposed, you see the exhibit? There's a proposed overhead sign mast arm that is...
Which is there today, right?
I'm sure it is. It was supposed to have been installed.
What is the sign supposed to indicate?
This is a traffic sign.
Brian, could you call it up with a Google Maps view of, um, Matlock Street there before you hit two oh two?
So there's two thousand four hundred and sixty-six square feet of additional land to be dedicated for South Matlock Street, and there was an overhead sign mast arm easement of a hundred and forty-four square feet. So I'm sure it's for the traffic signal or leading to the traffic signal at the intersection. If you look at the exhibit plan, it shows you what was being dedicated. Actually, we should have asked Stevie Walsh, but it wasn't.
Flash out to your police car.
As in, don't drop, hold on, check.
So it's over on that other side of Matlock there, right?
Yeah, yeah, you're right. To the south, right?
Yeah, over there, yeah.
But near that.
Turn around. That is, that's it there, right?
It's on the other side of the road.
It is on the other side of the road. Yeah, it is. Yeah, they had to acquire it from the property owner across the street, which they were able to do.
That's for this sign.
That's just for signage, yeah, that's okay.
Hundred and forty-four square feet for sign and then the additional right-of-way for the road.
Okay. Is the board have any questions on what Kristen described? Okay, that I will make the motion to approve the right-of-way in traffic signage easement agreement between Exeter nine-thirty-one South Matlock LP and West Ocean Township. Is there a second?
I'll circle that.
Thank you. Is there any board or public comments or questions on the motion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 So I'm handing him the original, it's signed by the property owner, and I'll take that back and record it soon.
And all positions of the motion passes five-zero. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is, uh, item number ten, which is discussion regarding the future dedication of the park at the Woodlands at Greystone and Arum Avenue to the township. Chris, do you want to, uh, fill us in on, uh, some recent meetings you've had relative to this topic?
Hi, it's Mr. Chairman. Um, so before the board this evening is discussion regarding the future dedication of the park at the Woodlands at Greystone, and I also included Arum Avenue here because that was discussed previously. Uh, in early twenty-twenty-two, the township did undertake an inspection of Arum Avenue in preparation for a potential dedication and prepare a punch list that was provided to the developer. And at the February first, twenty-twenty-two meeting, the board determined the dedication of Arum Avenue would not be considered at that time due to continued construction activity. Uh, subsequent to that, uh, over the course of the last month, we have had meetings at the staff, at a staff level, uh, with representatives from the township, the developer and natural land, and natural lands. Um, the crux of the meetings was to discuss the park and the status of the park construction at the Woodlands at Greystone. Currently, they are actively working on the construction of the trail system. Uh, we had a meeting last week with them where they are potentially looking to submit a request for an inspection sometime in the near future, but we haven't received that yet. From that, we would prepare a punch list and they would have to address any of those punch list items. And we would have to, they would have to address any of those punch list items prior to dedication being considered. We've also talked to Natural Land specific to the Serpentine Barrens, and we talked to them about the Serpentine Barrens. The current plan that they are under for the Serpentine Barrens is part of the preliminary land development approval, which, Brian, I could have them wrong, is a five-year plan, I believe.
Yes.
It has been stated to us that there are, there was additional, there was an accelerated plan that was approved by DCNR, but that was not, that has not been provided to the township at this juncture.
And Brian, or, I'm sorry, I don't think they said it was approved. They said that we asked them specifically to show us that DCNR was comfortable with the revised plan.
That's, that's correct. Uh, DCNR, DCNR was okay with the revised plan, but we have not received anything in writing. And unless we have anything that's received in writing, Brian and I are both in agreement that the existing plan is what holds, is what holds. That's what they're legally bound to. Uh, we also have had Natural Land review the equipment list with us and they've made some recommendations on equipment for the maintenance of both the park and the Serpentine Barrens, and that's been provided to, provided to Dave. Um, so at this juncture, based on these meetings, it's a question for the board as to how we go, how we continue to plan for this eventual dedication. And, um, another question from the developer has been that the board would like them to come to a public meeting to discuss this topic. Um, so that is where, that is where everything stands. We are still waiting for, we are still waiting for updated information from the developer at this time, which I plan to follow up with them tomorrow because it's been a week since we met with them and we have not heard anything.
Updated information relative to?
The Serpentine Barrens specifically. One thing I do want to, because this has been discussed for a while. We did get clarification on this last week. Um, there had been previous discussion regarding, um, burning of the Serpentine Barrens to remove invasive species. We did receive clarification from their consultant, Scott Bush, that the plan is not to do a large-scale burning. Their plan was to do soil scraping and herbicide treatments and only doing spot burning where necessary, small areas where necessary. And in fact, in one of the, in one of the items that Natural Land's recommended to us in terms of the equipment purchase was a small item to do spot burning for the, for the township, like very small areas, nothing that would overtake like three-twenty-two or cause any kind of like a safety issue from their perspective.
And how long would that have to be done?
Did Gary give us the, I don't remember Gary giving us the...
I think it's just as needed.
Yeah, it would just be as needed. And the way they described it was, you do the soils, the way it was described to us last week was you do the soil scraping, you do the herbicide, you do the herbicide treatment, and if there's like a patch of wisteria, you burn, that's still there after that, then you burn that off. Not like, like, it's a, up on that map, the Serpentine Barrens represents forty-two, represents forty-two acres of the total park area. So we are not talking about a forty-two acre area.
They're telling you're scraping a forty-two area?
No. Just the areas that are needed. Now, they have, apparently, they have gone out to identify the trees for removal in the Serpentine Barrens, but that work has not gotten started yet.
So sorry, he's doing all of this, is this the developer?
This is the developer, R.L.D.
So who are they using as consultants, say these are the trees that he's removing?
They are using a gentleman named Scott Bush.
He was pretty good at Natural Lands?
He was not with Natural Lands. He's their own, he's their own consultant.
He's an expert in barrens? He's every bit of a...
I don't know. He's an expert, but he is who they have...
Well, and also, he had, he got the permit from DCNR. So whatever work he proposed in the two thousand and eleven plan was approved and reviewed by DCNR. And Natural Lands didn't take issue with. And he has since basically set forth a proposal on how to revise that, so it's not a five-year plan. And he indicated that he had spoken with Gary Ginsburg from NLT and that Gary was comfortable with that.
Okay, but we don't have what that accelerated plan?
Right, and that's what I said from a, from a perspective of their approvals, the conditional use order and then I guess the final land development tied them into doing the restoration. At the time, the two thousand and eleven document was what we had. So I said, put together, send to us what your proposed revision is. We wanna make sure that DCNR approves that. You know, they may not issue it in permit, they may just do it through an email, that's fine, but we have to see that. And then we can decide whether or not they have to come back to you for any modifications. They probably won't, but I think you have to, you have to at least see it on paper to be able to evaluate. I mean, the goal again was just to restore the Serpentine Barrens. So if they're getting to that plan and as long as you're comfortable with it, again, I think we're relying upon the experts in NLT to say that that's the acceptable way to move forward.
The key, the, the key to this is the fact that there's been all these conversations that have occurred, but the township, to the best of our knowledge, has not received anything in writing. And we, we put them on notice that we need something in writing.
Good.
One of the things, let me just also say this, is that the developer in our conversation, you know, he knows this, this is something that's gonna take some time. And his question posed was, well, should I now go do this? Should I do this now? Because if I'm gonna do this now, but then you're gonna tell me I'm not taking the park until the whole development's done, until, you know, until you're taking the road, I'm not sure I want, he's not sure he wants to do it now. I guess that's sort of what was part of his question.
I think it's hard to answer when we don't know what this plan is.
That's right.
If it's a three-year plan, you're not gonna start it now.
That's exactly what I said. So the devil's in the detail. You need to evaluate, one step at a time, you need to evaluate what it is they're proposing and be informed about that before you can... And the other thing is, he hasn't, he hasn't set forth anything for you to accept dedication of. He's not prepared yet to have you accept dedication of anything yet.
Yeah, so just to kind of add on, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that...
Um, just to add on to what Kristen was saying. So once they have, once they submit a request for an inspection, I believe we have forty-five days in which to conduct that inspection and issue a punch list to them. So they haven't even made that request yet. So if you, hypothetically speaking, they made that request on July first, Brian has until mid-September to conduct the, or, you know...
Mid-August.
Or mid-August, excuse me, mid-August to conduct that inspection. And there's most likely going to be an extensive punch list that's going to have to be addressed. And then it wouldn't come before the board for any sort of consideration of dedication until this, until Brian is satisfied.
Okay, so let's, let's take it back up to a strategic level on this. So my concern is that we've got three moving parts here that we hear information about in separate chunks. And we're kind of, tonight, we'll like this for the board to kind of digest it all and have a conversation around what is the board's position relative to these three items, tied together relative to the dedication of this new asset. So we've got one conversation is about the park improvements themselves and when they're gonna be ready. is about the park improvements themselves, and when they're going to be ready. So that's what you just described, bringing forward a, the park supposedly complete, the trail system, providing them a punch list and getting it completed, so that you just gave a timeline it could happen. Theoretically, we don't know if it's a good one or not, so that's one issue. The second one is, and these, again, all these things may be tied together, the Serpentine Barrens that connects into this park area needs a course of action to, you know, take care of it to the point of it's been restored, whatever that means. We don't know today whether that's a one-year, two-year, three-year, five-year plan. We just don't have that information. So we're waiting on that. What we don't know is how the board feels about Serpentine Barrens as an independent thing versus the park system. So we need to talk about that. And then thirdly, is park, Serpentine Barrens, and access to it on a private road, Aram Avenue, and when we believe, that Aram Avenue should be considered the dedication. We've had, again, a standalone conversation previously about, Aram Avenue needs to be, we would only consider it when the full development is done. But now we've got these other parts that are moving along on a different timeline. So I think the board needs to discuss tonight and share its opinions on those three items, how they connect together. And then once we've got a conversation, you know, wherever we end up with that, then we can have another conversation with the developer, and say, here's, you know, what the board's thinking, and what is your more specific timeline on some of these things. Does that sound like a reasonable discussion?
Okay.
Yep. So who on the board would like to kick off their thoughts on those three issues, how they're connected together, what you think the timeline looks like for the potential dedication of this park and Aram Avenue to the township?
Before we do that, I just have a question that I wanted to ask. To the south of the Serpentine Barrens, or to the west, whatever you say, is the emergency entrance. Who's going to be handling the maintenance or making sure that that entrance is adequate? Does anybody know that? I just want to make sure that's not forgotten, one of the whole plan?
The trails, the, 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 the.
That's why I'm saying.
You will, right?
Township will.
Okay. So we'll take care of that road, it's going to be the emergency entrance?
And they've turned over, I believe they've turned over the access information for the gate and everything, because I went with Rick, we were meeting about that over a year ago.
Okay. Don't be working with the EMS people and all that, sort of suggestions?
We're still working with the controller at 322. That's the one I'm talking about? Yeah, it does. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask that question.
So are there any other questions that need to be added to the table?
Sean, just, you know, I have the, this is the five-year plan that's up in order now.
Five-year plan?
This is, each one of these slides is a year of what they're supposed to do in each year.
For the bearings.
So this is your group baron administration plan in 2011.
This is all we have to work with at this time.
This is what has been approved.
Okay. So it's a five-year program plan?
So let me, let me kick off for the board. So this is the board's view that we would, if the park-trail system, independent of the barrens, was ready, would we consider dedication of that while a five-year plan was being executed on the barrens?
Okay. Yeah, I need to get my head around the plan for the barrens. This is still the developer that will be doing the work.
Yeah, they purposely, when they subdivided the parcel, they purposely created the baron's land as a separate parcel. So that, because at the time, they were thinking it was a five-year plan, and they were thinking and planning that potentially the township may want the park, remainder of the park, 162 minus 40 acres ahead of it. So that is an option in terms of how subdivision plans are approved.
Okay. Does, does the board feel that option is viable? Is there anything that causes us concern about? I presume it's a, you know, once or twice a year, they would come and continue to, you know, a year, I don't know what the plan looks like in detail, Brian, but year two, three, four, five, they're not removing trees anymore, but they're selectively spraying, maybe doing this little spot burning, and it's done a couple of times.
So you're asking, will we take the trail while they're doing that?
Yeah, so say, here's, here's, yeah, what is your view as to whether that's acceptable, if it's properly coordinated, with staff, and it's?
You don't mean the trail and the Serpentine Baron part, you mean the rest of the park?
I mean the rest of the trail part.
The rest of the park, 100 and?
Recognizing that people, if we've accepted the park, and there's work going on in the barrens, there's people would be wandering in there unless it was managed effectively.
Mr. Chairman, the developer did mention in our meeting that they would, how is it, block? Is that an accurate statement?
I don't remember.
Or, they would block off the barrens?
I don't know how.
We, one of the things, if the board decides to consider that option, that I would request from the developer, is the plan of how they're going to block off the barrens for?
Okay.
So is there an option that basically, upon completion of the development, we then take the trail network and the Serpentine Barrens, but they do the five years of work of maintenance that they're required to do upon us receiving everything all at once? Is that our work?
No, the five years is to restore the barrens, so it is a baron, so there's continual maintenance.
Which, well, we aren't, it's ours, so it's going to burn costly.
Yes, there is maintenance of figures as well. A five-year plan is to restore it, so it is back to the baron.
But that needs to be conducted before we take it?
Or, no, you could, you could take ownership, but they question you to have access rights to do the maintenance.
Yeah, and we can grant them that, and we could ask for an escrow camp that keeps the money that's required to do this five-year plan available to, in case they?
The power is in your hands to decide when you want this land, basically.
I'm thinking about viability of people on those trails while the development's still continuing to be built. They don't know that anything's going to block off people from going to those. It makes me nervous to think that, you know, people are going to be walking. I mean, people are already using the trails.
What do you mean, walking where the houses are being constructed? Is that what you mean?
The rest of the tree, yeah.
Because there won't be anything, they won't offer a dedication, and you would never accept the park if there is still construction on the park. The construction activities on the park will be completed, and your inspectors will have gone out there and said that they've built everything per plan. So there will still be homes being constructed, but the actual improvements that were to be constructed on the 162 acres will be done. Maybe not the restoration of the barrens. That would be one thing that potentially might not be done if you choose to take the park from without. But the only?
I don't like the piecemealing of this project. That's kind of hurt.
Brian, let me, just real quick, in that five years, it does go into, within that five years, it does go into a period of active management, or is that out of the five years?
Give me one second.
I knew there's an active management phase up there.
Yes, there is. Here's the faith, here's the five-year phase up right here.
So essentially, I believe that would be, essentially, it goes?
Active management starts in phase two, which is after the five-year, because it still talks about controlled burns in years.
Okay, I wouldn't put a lot of credence on this five-year. They're very clear that they're not intending to do this. I know this is all we have right now, but they, that's why I said it was in the detail of the new plan.
Yeah, the only reason I'm referring to this is this is all we have.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, they are, they have said they're not intending to do this.
Right. As of today, has the developer even started? They haven't even started?
This part, this is the case? Which, which part? What do you mean?
Serpentine.
Phase one, year one, they haven't even started?
They indicated last week they wanted to get started on their tree removal.
Their tree removal, which is? As of today, they have not even started?
As of last week, we are meeting, they have not. They might have sent last week. They claimed that they were going to be.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's just put ourselves in their shoes for a minute, okay? I mean, they could say, look, we're going to do phase one this summer, we're going to take care of phase one, and the park's going to be ready by September. We'd like you to take them and allow us to come back in year two, three, or whatever they think their accelerated plan is, just to finish it off. But we believe phase two, year two, is a one-week effort. I mean, that's what we're, that's what I think if they were here today, it would be saying.
Now, just understand legally, now, according to the conditional use, we have the option to accept the park in pieces, or we're not obligated to do that.
That's right.
We make that really clear.
That's right.
So my one concern, sitting here as you're in here, is I don't know what the next schedule, the quote accelerated, end quote schedule is. They have not provided us anything except they're going to accelerate. And we want to take their word for it.
So under the conditions that the park, the trail system is completed, and they've done everything that they're supposed to do for this, but there's still active construction in the development, how do you feel about that while the park is now in our?
It's no different than there being a building a house in a neighborhood, that has sidewalks. It's because it's house construction. It's not the barrens where they're out in the woods scraping up. The differentiation is, is that the trail system is going to be completed separate from the barrens. And that's where the breakdown is, is when that's completed, the question is, is when the trail system is completed, have you punched by Dee and Dave and Doreen and Carol and me, or we've all done our work and done our punch list, and they've addressed our punch list? And we say, okay, they've addressed everything that we needed for the 100, we'll call it 120 acres, which is the main trail system, not the baron's piece. How does the board feel? Is your problem, as the board, to say, we will be entertaining dedication at that point before the answer, you will wait until the barrens are going to take all of these? That was the question that was posed to us by the developer.
Well, I'll give my opinion. I'll share it. I feel as though I want to wait till everything is done to do the dedication, for a couple of reasons. I want to avoid unkept promises that we know have unkept from the past. But they could say that they're going to barricade the area off around the Serpentine Barrens, where people are going to enter just like they enter it now, and there's trespassing signs that say you can't go. The people are coming through now, we know that for sure. I think by waiting, we have more leverage with the developer on anything we need to negotiate. If there's any legal liability, I wouldn't want to get involved in that. And I want to ensure everything is done to our satisfaction. It's kind of like paying a contractor 100% before they complete the work. That's just my thoughts.
You still have escrow, though. You have escrow.
You have, you have legal liability. If there's anything that happens on that property or somebody sues you, I just, there's not enough money for that.
It's a probably accessible system available. I mean, right now, you could have, I mean, people are using that system today. The reality is, people are going there and using that system.
They're legal, correct.
Okay, so does that make, okay, so you're legal?
Doesn't make it legal.
I, to me, if the park system is finished, and the Serpentine Barrens needs one or two more years of, one week of attention, or whatever else these phase two and three need, to say, we're not going to take this park and have it as part of the township asset to stop, you know, using it as an effective township asset, doesn't seem good, you know, good thing.
And to piggyback onto that, the developer has stated he will not offer the park without retaking Aram.
Okay, so let's, let's go into that next, everything being tied together.
He said that, he said that at the first week.
The 160?
He will not, the park and Aram are dedicated.
I didn't hear that last week.
He brought it up about the liability.
Yeah, I don't think he said that last week, though.
Then if that's the case, then it makes it clear to me that we should wait till the houses are sold off, completed, they're sold off in the, that development.
He did not say that last week, because I think his position has changed.
Okay.
His position has changed because he, according to his lawyer, he worries that people, he doesn't want the liability, number one. And he thinks that you're going to start to get people here in the community to say, you promised us this park. You know, we have to live with 598 new homes, so where's the amenity that we get to use? And they're going to put pressure on you. This is what he's telling us. They're going to put pressure on you to accept dedication so that they get some benefit out of this new development, not just the people that live there. So, but he, he backed off, I think he's backed off that you have to take Aram. If you take, if you want the park, you have to take Aram too. He's backed off. I think he's loud and clear and understands you have no interest in taking Aram until the construction is done. I think that point has been very low.
That's fine, but then that raises the question. So if we don't take the dedication of Aram, but do take dedication of that portion of the park that's just the trails, then we're going to have, allowing our residents to access a public park through private roads. You're going to maintain those roads during the winter time.
You could get to the park from, from the 80, 80 spot lot on Gannetso Park, Gannetso Pike. There's a lot on Green Hill that people are using every day, parking their car and walking through the trails, it's a nice view every morning. There's other public, you could go to Greystone.
But there's other, there are other public spaces that give access to the trail system that are along Aram Avenue also.
Yeah. Those are all true statements. So to me, Aram Avenue?
That may be utilizing Aram Avenue.
Aram Avenue is being utilized today by everybody in the township, and they are parking in private lots and using the trail system. That is a bad one. So, you know, digging our heels in and saying, wow, we don't want to take it until everything's finished. I'm not quite sure it's the right approach. But I would not be interested in taking Aram Avenue personally myself until the infrastructure construction traffic is finished. So they have to build, what, a couple of extensions to the existing roads, finish up those traffic circles that are called SAKs, right?
There's a few phases left, right?
There's at least one more phase as you can see.
So that is going to require heavy earth-moving equipment to come in. It will beat up the road, et cetera. I think that work needs to be completed before the board should consider Aram Avenue. Whether we have to wait until the last home is finished, I don't necessarily agree with. But I do agree that the building of the roads and the infrastructure should be completed before we consider that.
I mean, if you still have houses that have not yet been built, you're still going to have heavy equipment coming up along those roads.
It's like having to build a larger existing road, you know, and then full development to ten homes, you're still going to allow traffic coming down the road.
In this case, here, they have?
But then I think the residents argue that all you're doing is letting some homes be built. You won't let me access the park on a, on a public road. I think it's a weaker argument for us.
What did the access eventually, when is the right time?
Yeah, I think it's.
Question of time.
I mean, if you're worried about what's the issue with the road, is the cost of repairing it, you can ask them to increase the escrow so that any maintenance issues, while they take another year to finish building how?
That's already voted to a vote anyway.
But it may not be enough, Kristen. It may not be enough. What's in the order, maybe just enough for the fifth final top, so, you know, redo the road?
No, I think it's, I think it's pretty strong. I think, and I'm highlighting the point right now, it's pretty, I think it basically says, if you accept it early, they don't even start their 18-month maintenance period until all the construction is done. So you're basically, you would take it, they would post a bond, but that bond, the 18 months doesn't even start until all the construction is done.
Yeah, my point would be, we took it early, like you say, two years before it finished. There's damage to the road occurs, and we need to fix it within that two years, not wait.
They're fixing it.
No, we've taken it from them.
I know, but the way that the condition is read, they have to fix it.
Right. So whatever it is, I don't think there's a cost problem to the township in taking Aram Avenue. So what is the barrier to taking it?
Liability, potential liability, especially with that much traffic on there, with contractors and trucks and people and traffic, and we have liability.
It all exists today. It all exists today. Even saying, we would not be sued if someone got hit on Aram Avenue, I don't think so.
It's going to be minimal after the construction is done. It's not going to be as, the volume is not going to be as bad as it is now.
I agree about the volume, and certainly, like you said, I believe the infrastructure needs to be completed before we consider it. But I think waiting up to the final year once you're in phase six is unnecessary. But anyway, we don't necessarily have to agree on that tonight. So going back to the issues in general, how things tie together, if the developer's okay with a park dedication without Aram Avenue continuing to remain private, that, to me, sounds like the most likely near-term offer from them, is if the park system is complete, without the Serpentine Barrens, it'd be offered for dedication. And is the board interested in taking it? If not, what is our position to line up?
So if the park system is complete, meaning we've gone out, we've inspected, we've given them a punch list, paid all of it, then I think there's a reason to not take it. Or maybe the reason's not to take it, Aram.
So is there any issue about this that we have not covered at this point? I mean, to me, it sounds like we have a view as to at least the near term with the park coming up sooner rather than later, to have a conversation with them in a public meeting. Yeah. You think?
I would.
I mean, I don't really want to do it until I know what this plan is.
Right.
We're not going to do it next month, or whatever. We're going to do it when they've provided the information.
And showing the DCNRs go with it.
Yeah.
And you've had a chance to talk to Natural Lands, make sure they're also, yeah, yeah.
Well, if we can agree with that?
Basically, we're, yeah, we're right, we're right where we're at. Right where we're at. We'll wait for the developer to come up with some, some information here.
I think once we get the information that we requested regarding the Serpentine Barrens, we circulate that through Natural Lands, make sure everything is good, and then, then we can schedule a time for them to come to a public meeting.
And if we can get anything from the development side with a more accurate timeline on when this park's going to be, if they have you ready for punch list, that would be good.
Yeah, I mean, they, the developer himself and their engineer, Ray, or Hasky, who's been the project manager, said four weeks.
I believe he also said four weeks back.
Well, they both live in Florida. The two say four weeks. Don't remember their assignment, so I'll take it for the word.
But I do intend to follow up with Scott Bush tomorrow regarding the status of the items that were requested in our meeting last week. Sounds good.
Any public final business question, Doug?
There seems to be a lot of question about this one here. Wouldn't the conditional use order of 2009 and subsequent amendments answer many of these questions? And isn't the developer repetitive orders?
Yeah, he's out of those orders, but as far as the timing of when the township accepts dedication of Aram and the park, that's in their discretion.
And as far as, is the board concerned at all about the landmarks as far as how many homes are sold versus how much of the park is done? Is that still being considered? Or is that still a concern?
That all of this, they're?
The original approval had very, you know, this many lots had to be done, and this had to be done, that's our time. That all but wiped away as it got modified through the approval process. Because of the NID, the NID became a vehicle that they could do it all at once.
Yeah. So I think the answer to the question is, the board has not indicated that certain number of homes to put out the park. If the park is available and finished, are we in a position to accept it or not? Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, number 11. Discussion impossible approval ordinance number nine, 2023, amending, amending chapter 25, five alarm devices of the West Ocean Township Code of Ordinances. Kristen?
So when you adopt change, your fee resolution to change the fines for false alarms, I went back and looked at chapter 25 of your code, and the old fines were within chapter 25, under 25-19. So I mentioned to Chris that we should change it to be consistent with your new, the new fines that you decided upon. So this is an amendment to chapter 25 of the West Ocean Code. We had to advertise tonight's hearing in the Daily Local on May 30th, and I sent a copy of the ordinance to the law library in the Daily Local for public inspection. So it would just align chapter 20, section 25-19 with the fee resolution that you revised, so that the first two false alarms are just warning letters.
So that, that is in this now, and there was no other changes made on May 18th that required an update.
That's right.
Okay. I will make the motion to adopt ordinance number nine, 2023, amending chapter 25 of the West Ocean Township Code of Ordinances. Thank you. Any public comments or comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? It will take a vote, all in favor to say aye, aye, hang opposition. Hearing now, the motion passes. Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Next is agenda item number 12, discussion and possible appointment of Code Inspections Inc. as the zoning officer for West Ocean Township for the remainder of this year. Chris, you just want to update the board on this situation.
Aye, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is consideration to appoint Code Inspections Inc. as zoning officer for the remainder of 2023. The board didn't point this firm as interim zoning officer after the departure of the previous assistant township manager and zoning officer while search for a permanent full-time replacement was being conducted. During our search, the township received a limited number of applications and did not find any candidates that met the qualifications. This is not, I want to just make it clear, this is not unique to us, when I talk to my other colleagues, they're in a similar position that we're in. So based on this, I do recommend proceeding forward with Code Inspections for the remainder as zoning officer for the balance of 2023, while we continue to review options with the Codes Department for 2024. We've had those discussions with the board about the plan that Andrew and I have in place for 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Any board questions or comments?
Can we say we're going to increase their hours?
Yes, they were doing, we're going to ask them to do 20 hours a week, minimum.
And they're doing, what, eight, they work?
They were, they were doing about 10, and they, they have been increasing them, and they've been doing a lot more. And Andrew and I did meet with, met with our representative of Code Inspections a couple of weeks ago, and we have, they've increased their hours, and they've been doing what we need them to do.
Do you see this arrangement going, continuing into 2024?
Not for the zoning officer work, for, probably for the rental inspections and assistance with fire inspections. Because while we do have a deputy fire marshal, he's also one of our building inspectors, and he's been very active with the construction at Greystone.
Any other questions? Chris, just when, again, when Christine does the mid-year budget review, if you could just, you know, indicate the additional expense of Code Inspections and any offset in the salary area because of not hiring the zoning officer.
Yes, sir.
I will make the motion to adopt, I'm sorry, to appoint Code Inspections Inc. as our zoning officer for the remainder of 2023. Just a second.
One second, Dan.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any board or public comments on the motion? If you can't ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Last agenda item tonight is number 13, which is approval of the bills to be paid for the general fund, sewer revenue fund, the waste recycling fund, and the cattle reserve fund. I will make the motion to pay the bills for those funds, just for a second. Thank you, Ashley. Does the board have any questions on the bills to be paid? Are there any public comments or questions? Steve?
Yeah, just one thing, it appears that the Pico Energy Bill, with our South Concord room, went and paid twice.
Which sheet are you looking at, Steve?
It's, I don't know what page it's on.
Is it in the invoices by GL, or is it in prepaid files?
It's check number 78531. It's the same amount, paid twice.
I'll check, I will check in for that.
It's like we're involved, we're looking very carefully.
Dave, you have a paper, isn't there like a split of the bill?
I think it's a lot to replace.
I know.
There are people bills between the street lights and sewer and...
I'll check, it's checking, all right, thank you, Steve.
Similar mistake, but I just...
Well, I think you'll find it's a allocation. Anyway. Any other comments on the bills? All right, we'll take a vote, all in favor of paying the bills, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Motion passes five zero. Is there a motion for agenda meeting?
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I have, before we adjourn, I do have one quick announcement. On May 23rd, 2023, we were notified by Chester County that we were awarded a $250,000 grant for a market premium project of West Ocean Community Park. So we have, we also have a $300,000 grant in the pipeline with the state, so I would like to thank everybody who worked on that grant application. Would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Jamie, our past employee, she did work on this application, I did email her to thank her for her work on it, and that we were awarded the funds.
That's right, awesome news, yeah.
Yep, $200, and I did talk to, I talked to Chris Peterson after we were awarded, he is working on the, he's going to work on the updated cost estimate that was requested of him. I did tell him, let's see what happens with the grant funding, so now that we do have at least one source of grant funding, he's going to update the cost estimate in preparation for the 2024 budget, we do have, I believe with this program, there's a three-year timeline for completion.
And I believe what I have to fund this improvement is due to the...
Probably in the fall, the fall, I'm going to estimate the fall.
So will no joint in budget setting process?
Well, sure, and that was a $300,000 request.
Can I also ask a question? Do, did you, we confirmed the date for the quality and conditional uses being July 12th at 6:00, is that on everybody's radar?
We talked, yeah, so the calendar is, is hold, so is it confirmed?
That's acceptable to the applicant, I just want to make sure that that was on everybody's radar, given that that's a week after July 4th, and...
Yep.
Okay.
I believe we talked about that in the last quarter, yeah.
Okay, July 12th at 6:00 PM, thank you.
I apologize for delaying the time.
That's okay, anything else? Okay, I'll make a question to a chair, just a second. All in favor of Jim, say aye. Thank you, everyone.